Commissioner, it's getting to order. Commissioner Hodges, would you please lead us to the point of allegiance?
So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberating, justiciable.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Let's take a peek at the minutes from our last meeting on the third. Is there any discussion or motion to approve?
Move is presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto our calendar. Is there any discussion, any questions?
Neither.
Neither.
Nor do I. Onto previously signed documents. Discussion or motion to approve?
Motion approved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, we have the superintendent here. Michelle, nice to see you. You have an update for us? In the world of corrections?
How are you all?
Well, thank you.
Yep.
So much. Did you all see the memo I sent up? So, um, our current population, we're currently at seventy-three. Pre-trials, awaiting trials, forty-nine, thirty-six males, seven females, eighteen sentenced. Sorry, that should be sixteen male, two female, five are in core. Four male, one female, all facility, three, three males that are two at view. We have one on dual county. That means they have a graft and sentence along bars. We have three on electronic monitoring, four on work release. And community corrections has put twenty-six people into rehab acceptances. Sixteen males and ten females. So far as a four-twenty-one, we've got three-hundred-and-twenty-two bookings this year. So far, that seems to be an increase from last year. So far in protective costumes, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-four this year. That cannot be a correct number. No way. I apologize for that. Should be pretty I'm without my phone. It's pretty sad nowadays. I'll give you that one afterwards. It's twenty-eight men and nine female. Pre-trial services currently has sixty-eight, forty-five men, there are twenty-three females, four of them are on electronic monitoring. There is currently a bill, um, they're looking at increasing the number that go on electronic monitoring. That won't go through until twenty-six. Um, superintendent's affiliate is working really hard on, kind of working hard on that bill to reduce the fiscal component while not for the counties. Programming, we have work ready, the chocolate and high-set parenting, life skills serve safe, um, core. We now have M A T groups. And, um, we do the community service that we work with, um, maintenance. Staffing, Captain Jamie Mary retired after twenty-three years of service as of March of this year. In his place, he promoted captain, um, to the captain position, position, Sergeant Ben Dow into the sergeant position, CEO Dustin Rhodes, who had, um, a number of years of being a sergeant out at Grafton County before he came over here to Belmont County. And CEO Josh Eldridge became a corporal. Rhodes and Eldridge just assuming their positions this week in actual, um, on shift. So it's been a great help to now have them covering third shift during our, um, every day because we had a big gap on third shift. So hoping that helps out a lot. We just had two COs complete the academy on Friday. We have two more to finish out at the end of the year. We have one opening. We do currently have two interview in the position that are certified correction officers. So I'm hoping that our salary being so much higher than some of the outside counties have given them the incentive to come over to us. Right now, um, year-to-date budget expenditures are right on track of twenty-four percent. That, um, has spent one-point-four-five-five-point-six-one-one million out of the five-point-nine-four-four-point-seven-nine-one million out of our year budget. Additional information, our new jail software is right on track, if not ahead of schedule with the help of I T. Um, we start our building process next week, which is called the D P R, which will build our new software. That'll take three days of endless building. We're hoping to incorporate all the outside vendors into that, including our fingerprinting, our commissary, which hopefully will make things much quicker and easier. Also, our Vine group, which is our victims notifications. Through this process, we discovered that our victims' notifications are kind of slowed down with our current ex-jail system, which is a real problem for us. But when someone goes out on work release, our current vines program doesn't notify them as it should. So the new system will actually notify them. If not, the day they go out, we're going to try to see it. Working with Vine to make sure that we are following the R S A, we're working with the prosecutor, but our Vine system should work with our jail system on that as well. Our air conditioning unit is up and going thanks to Mr. Bossy and you as well, officials. Um, it's freezing down there. That's why I'm wearing like four layers. So thank you again for that. We're very grateful that it's not eighty-four degrees down there. So thank you again. Um, we're preparing for Bike Week and the start of concert season as well as correctional. I'm doing correctional staff week, not correction officer week from May fifth to the eleventh. We do have a few other staff that are not just correction officers that, um, we will be honoring for that week. So, do you have any questions for me, John?
Michelle, um, you mentioned there's pending legislation and bracelet monitoring.
It's part of the bail reform bill that's currently being put through. And that would include, um, electronic monitoring as part of bail reform. And that would add on to our pre-trial services. And that would make the county fiscal responsible for anyone that cannot afford to pay for their own electronic monitoring.
So there's an upside and downside to everything, I would think, in, in your line of work. Is there anything you don't like about the, uh, electronic monitoring extension? Do you see any downside to it?
The downside would be the cost of it. Right now, we do work with the court system that if they do request that someone be on electronic monitoring, we do put them on it. Um, as I just showed you, we do have four on them. Those are usually the sex offenders or high-risk offenders. It will be if the court requires us to put all of them on it. It would be how they utilize it. If they continue to use it in this court system, for just the high utilizers, we can work with that. It's, if it becomes that they want to use it on everybody, um, that's when it's going to be very costly because if somebody can't afford it, then we are going to assume the cost of that. We've worked with, um, going back and forth with the Dupont Group on how we can find different ways to make the offender more obligated to pay for it, but they're not found guilty at that point. So there's been a lot of back and forth. The bill's been pushed out right now. It's believe July of twenty-six. They're looking at putting it into effect, but it's going through several rewrites right now. And the biggest one is the cost.
Uh, I'm guessing this type of equipment has a low failure rate. Any concerns with reliability?
No, we have a very good, um, bracelet system right now. It's the hard part is some of our areas are very remote, so they kind of bounce off. So it can be kind of hard to track. And the problem we are asking is that each county has their own ability to make conditions. Because every county has different rules for how to enforce the bracelet. Um, so we had a recent situation where someone was on the electronic monitoring while they were on, um, pre-trial. And it was a domestic violence situation and if there's an exclusionary zone and they violate it and our pre-trial services call the local P D and right away, things were moved very quickly. But if they live in a remote area, sometimes there's a delay in that. But we've kind of looked at different programs to figure out what would be best. It's going to be if we have to expand it, what is the best fiscally responsible way to go with what we need for the population if we expect it to grow? I mean, right now our bracelets are really great. They talk to the person. So if they're not charging it, you can literally tell them to charge it. Or if they're doing something wrong, you can tell them to stop doing what they're doing. It's kind of an interesting form. I've worked with bracelets that don't do that. And we've had somebody incarcerated here that was on a home confinement bracelet out of Massachusetts and Massachusetts didn't even know they were here. So our bracelets are pretty spot on. It's just a matter of how many we're going to have, um, available for the population, which we're not sure yet what we're going to need.
Okay, no C Ds with that legislation then.
I just, can I ask a question both of you? If, if not, if they're not, um, put on the electronic monitoring bracelet, then, then what?
Then there, it would depend on how the court decides to work with it. Right now, there's several pre-trial people that are not put on the bracelet and we continue to supervise them.
So it's not that they would, either they're in your, in the jail or on the bracelet?
It would depend on how the magistrate.
Because if, if they're in the jail, obviously that's going to cost a lot more than if they're on the bracelet.
Exactly. But it depends on how the magistrate, the court wants to, um, depending how they want to look at the risk of the person. If they find that they are too risky to put out without the bracelet, but the bracelet does save us a lot of money at the same time. You're, it's just the risk to the community in some cases that they might not want to. But if you calculate the cost of having them in the jail every day, it's a huge savings at the same time. Especially when you consider the mental health and the medical needs of some of these people, it's gets pretty expensive. There's a lot of bills going through legislation right now that affect.
Yeah, about nine hundred, I think.
Yeah.
Michelle, how's Captain Dow settling into the new position?
He's doing really great. He's learned the different steps. Um, we're kind of taking it kind of slow so he can transition the current day sergeant into his position. Um, and that's been a big challenge as well because I don't want to handicap the current day sergeant either because he's going from second to first and first shift has all the court duties. So he's kind of wearing both hats right now. He's training the day sergeant and he's training to be the captain. Um, I can say the Captain Laramie taught, I say Captain Dow to it a lot before he left, um, which is very helpful. Dow has a number of years in the building, so he knows the ins and outs of the staffing, um, in many ways that I don't know. So he can give me those pieces that I don't. So as a team together with Lieutenant O'Reilly, the three of us make a great team now. So each one of us to the table can bring a different aspect and it works much better. It's becoming a great team. The three of us each, I can't say enough, bring each a different aspect and I'm hoping my new sergeant, my new corporal can add to that. And they've been, I can't say enough, my team down there, my sergeants, my corporals, even my correction officers have been a great help on everything.
Great.
John, thanks for getting that air conditioning up and running so quickly because that's a huge infrastructure upgrade.
Oh, yeah, in that building?
Yeah, thank you.
We've been working on some plans. We've, um, John's put in a new sink down there for us. Um, been working on some new plans. We've been doing some painting. We're going to work out a Bike Week plan when, because during Bike Week, we do try to reduce the population just in case we get a very large population during that week. So we have some influx to do some painting and some cleaning. John and I are going to make some plans with Captain Dow to what we can do during that week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Commissioners, um, next up we have our facilities manager, Mr. Bossy. John, how are you?
Good.
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 And, yes.
Hey, we're getting tagged in.
Okay, we are.
It's a bogo. Um, might as well start with the refrigeration, see this more.
So at the last meeting, we, um, presented the R F P for the refrigeration and condenser equipment. And there were a few questions that were, um, outliers as far as needing electrical work. We've talked with the electrician and it does not seem that there's going to be any need for any additional electrical work. If, if the only chance, very, very small, like one percent, would be seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars if we needed something. Um, the other thing, uh, freezer accommodations, we're okay with the refrigeration to be able to, um, empty the cooler and put stuff into the other cooler and then fix this one and move back and forth. So would be great. Um, the freezer, we won't be able to, um, but Cisco, who we use as a vendor, um, is able to give us a, is it twenty-eight feet?
Uh, I think it's a twenty-six foot, uh, freezer trailer that they can leave with us for the week.
For the week.
We just have to pay for the diesel to.
Replace it, yeah, and replace the diesel when we.
No spoiler this time around.
No, so we're good, we're good there. Um, what's it for? That's it. The grease straps are starting to, and we're hoping to get them done in two, maybe one, two days.
Yes. It's fast.
So.
So one of the items for discussion tonight is the sprinkler system. Um, the nursing home has in its budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the sprinkler system. In the attic of the nursing home. But the R F P, I mean, got no bidders at all. Had very low response and not very much interest in the project at all. And from the people that we did have come in, they all said that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars wasn't enough money to even replace the system. So we kind of, the three of us took a step back and, and relooked at, at this project overall. So what we feel is probably right now the best course of action is to take the existing system that we have now and pressure test the system, identify all the leaks that are in the system and then replace the pipe, pipe for pipe, um, existing in kind. And then replace some gauges on the system. And then there's a system that we want to, um, put in that coats the inside of the pipe and prevents corrosion and further deterioration of the piping system. And then do an internal inspection of the system and you can go from there. We feel that that approach is going to be the best course of action for us to get that system back up a hundred percent without replacing it. So instead of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that work that I just outlined, it's seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars to do that scope of our to Superior Fire, who's been our inspection vendor and our repair vendor for many, many, many years here. Um, they've always serviced us really well and done a great job for the county. Um, the three of us are very confident that they'll do a good job getting the system back up a hundred percent. But while they're identifying the leaks, this price does not include the actual replacement of pipes. So if they come in here and they say you need to replace ten pieces of pipe, twenty-one feet long each, it'll cost us much money. Um, that'll be an additional cost on top of the seventeen thousand. But we are very confident it's not going to come anywhere, even remotely close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the request tonight is for you to allow us to waive the purchasing requirement, to use them and provide the service to the county. Um, and, um, see where we go from there.
John, is the system presently in compliance with the fire department?
As it was designed back in nineteen ninety-six, it is.
Okay.
The problem is, is if we started doing other work, it would require us to really bring the system up to all two thousand twenty-four version of N F P A twenty-five and um, lots of changes. There's also a question whether or not the fire department will allow us to keep the system incapacitated during the work or have to restore it back online fully every single day. Um, we haven't got that question answered yet from the fire department, but I really feel that this is the best course of action. It's about a week's worth of work. Going to get us up and running in the direction we need to be.
Are there any visible leaks throughout the system? Any drips, any draps?
So the leaks that we have are air leaks because it's a dry system, so it's charged with air. And there's many, many, many patches that are up there. Basically, all they are is pieces of rubber with a, like a radiator clamp band around the pipe that just holds the pressure in. And over the years, they've patched it and non-replaced pipes. We're at a situation where we've got so many leaks. We're going to charge the system like a hundred and fifty pounds of air and it's going to sound like a bunch of whistles up in there as the air leaks. We'll mark all the pipe, get everything identified, get everything replaced. Um, and forth from there.
So if you were to do nothing to this system for another one, two, three, four, five years, it's likely that in the event of a, of a fire, catastrophic fire, you'd have system failure.
Well, that we'd have a system failure, it would still charge and it would still work as a fire suppression system. The problem that we're having is there was a period about a month, month and a half ago where we had a leak and our air compressor, just called a jockey pump, ran for like thirty-six hours straight. Um, it just could keep the system pressurized. And the, the problem is, is if the system loses so much pressure, that compression can't keep up, then that water flap opens and it charges the system with water and all those patches. The water has nowhere to go and it's going to go flowing through the patches. So you'll have all of these leaks of water everywhere throughout the entire facility. But if there was a fire, it would still work.
So for what could be maybe a twenty thousand dollar investment to refurbish the system?
Yeah, refurbishes are good.
Is, is this a long-term solution?
I believe it is. I believe it is.
Commissioners.
I've got no problem moving forward. I don't either. Um, obviously the fire department is going to put the seal of approval on whatever work you have done.
Yep. As is the state, we have to submit to the fire marshal's office as well, while R D A has to, the fire marshal's office on what we're doing.
I, I just want to make sure that we're keeping things safe over there, that's all.
Absolutely. That's the number one goal, obviously.
Sure. Okay, is there a motion to waive this purchasing policy?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The other item is the secure care. You have, um, I don't know if you have a quote from them in your package. So
Oh, do they want a, a quote?
I think you just told them this.
Some quotes are there.
One, there's only one vendor.
We're probably okay then.
I mean, we can give them if they want.
Oh, oh my gosh, you guys.
I've seen.
Okay, there's, keep, we want to share.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
So last year, literally about a year ago, you approved us doing a new access control system in the facility. And we finally made our way into the nursing home. And one of the things that we found is that there's a conflict between the new access control system and the secure care wander guard system for the residents. Both systems are operating at exactly the same frequency and causing all sorts of problems. So we halted the work of the access control system um, to come up with a solution. And the solution unfortunately is, is E S L who provides us secure care. They are a sole proprietor, only vendor, only game in town that does that system. Shelby even reached out to all the other county nursing homes and they all use the same system with the exception of Wine. Um, so I'm ultimately, at the end of the day, we need to upgrade the secure care system so that we have two independently functioning systems. Pushed back to the vendor because I felt that it was something that they missed doing their due diligence part. Um, sent them an email and they sent a reply, basically waving their hands of any responsibility of it. Um, I was even searching to see if there was somebody else who could service this new system that we have, the new access control and they're basically at the end of the day, we have to maintain that relationship with them. So we're, right now, we're at a standstill, unable to finish the system in the nursing home until we're able to upgrade that secure care system.
So the vendor is at fault here.
In my opinion, they are. Because we went through, it was Phil Dion, myself and Amanda, the assistant director of nursing, went through door by door by door. And those wander guard systems were in place at the time of the of the walkthroughs. And, you know, I feel very strongly that they should have said, what is this? What does this do? You know, we asked a couple of simple questions. You could have done some research, found out what frequency things are running on and avoided this problem. But um, they are not receptive to that at all. So this is a case where we're actually kind of stuck, honestly.
Is there is there anything on our end we could or should have done?
I mean, we've got to have it.
So we have to take, we have to take this hit. I don't know if there's a way to circumvent this.
Where, where could the money come from?
Um, building improvements in the nursing home. This is the correct line item for it. And it, the overage it causes there will come from the sprinkler system where we just saved, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, that makes sense.
Makes me feel a little better.
Yeah, money is there to do it.
Okay. All right.
So the request is to waive the purchasing policy because this is also a spender.
And authorized spending of it.
Yes, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
And the other item, um, if you have any package is, um, the generator platform.
So, so presently, just to confirm,
Yep.
without the platform, there is no access to maintenance or repairs on this generator. There's just, you know, a couple of ladders and a, and a staging ramp will not do it.
I understood there was access, but they refused. They said it was too dangerous to go up and work on it.
No, they refused because there is no access. They want, you know, stators can't walk. I mean, the company installed it, which is Brookfield, they're they are servicing it, but, um, you know, may not be using them forever. Plus employees can't go up there safely and do weekly checks as part of their nursing home requirement. Um, so that's, that's it's kind of a dangerous situation if you go out and look at how the doors open and how you have to manipulate yourself to open those doors and access. it's kind of a dangerous situation if you go out and look at how the doors open and how you have to manipulate yourself to open those doors and access those, those areas. So I reached out to five companies and I got three quotes, reviewed them with Shelley and RJ and I was finding it very difficult to generate an RFP for this just because everybody's slightly a little bit different, how they construct and what they're, not necessarily what they're made of, but how the railings are done, how the stairs are done. Different systems, different legs. So to write an RFP for kind of like a boilerplate spec was was difficult, which is why I took the time to reach out to people and, and get quotes to present to you. So we do have three good solid quotes. But he, so I was just making the request that you allow authorization to use a low bidder, red team for this. And so we can get that project going. There's nine thousand dollars in my budget and nine thousand dollars in the nursing home budget to fund this project.
So John, in here it said they're going to fabricate the needed equipment and ship it to us standard freight. Who's going to install it?
We're going to hire the installation of, of this.
So is that installation included in this?
That would be separate. Once we physically get it here, get it assembled and see the actual footprint of it. We'll have to do a little bit of work outdoors. RJ and I actually went out and reviewed that area to see when we're talking, thinking about doing is extending the width of the concrete out there so that the the platform actually sits fully on concrete all the way around the whole pad rather than digging sonar tubes and getting into the ground out there to a little bit safer. There's a lot of electric, gas, power lines out there. Kind of uncomfortable digging around.
So dig safe will have to be something.
If we were to do sonar tubes and, and that kind of approach, yeah, I would have to dig safely. But if we did something, you know, slab on grade attached to the existing slab, we would be able to just set it on place.
So as frequently happens here with these proposals, there's great disparity from the lowest bid to the highest bid. Is it possible, because you have three different vendors, three different systems and ideas of how to put together, you know, staging platform. Is it possible that the installation cost could be significantly higher on lower bid because of the way it's designed?
None of them are installing it.
I know, but is it possible that we'll end up paying a lot more for the red team bid to install rather than if we paid for the upside innovation system? I mean, we, we don't know.
I don't believe that would be the case. They're all fundamentally same, you know, adjustable legs and four by four platforms and yeah, they're all pretty much how they go together, pretty much the same.
And, and we presently have no cost estimate for the installation.
I wouldn't be surprised if it was at least the cost of the equipment itself.
Well, no.
No, no. We, uh you know, if you wanted a low bid on this, it leaves between the nursing home budget and my budget, a little over five thousand dollars. And we feel very confident we can get it installed and concrete and everything done for under that.
Are there any local vendors you can think of that comes to mind who might be appropriate for the assignment?
I reached out to Doss Concrete today. They're in Wanasbong.
Yeah.
They're a good company. So they're supposed to contact me tomorrow and go and take a look at it. Just going to see what we can come up with the best approach and go from there.
Might I suggest so delayed construction? Have you think of it? Give them, give them a call. And maybe, I'm sure they'll bid anyway. And Doss will probably bid. Okay. So where are we on this, Deborah?
We are looking for a motion to award this work to.
Red Team, yeah, okay. Commissioners, is there a motion?
A move is recommended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, John, that takes care of the platform, not the installation. More later on that.
The other item on the agenda is we you should have in your memo or any CDG grant to the Department of Energy. I guess it could be got money years ago, Deborah was telling me, from the same organization. They earmarked seventy seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for the county. And the deadline for submission was tomorrow. We've already done a preliminary application to them. That's under review. If we are fully awarded the money, would be my intention to replace the energy management system in the jail for all the equipment over there. And it would be consistent with what we've done with the courthouse, the nursing home, the administration wing and the sheriff's wing. So the county at the end of the day would all end up on the same software platform, which is very good thing. We would have just had one vendor rather than multiple vendors taking care of it. And it's a little bit different. It's a voucher system and not necessarily a grant. So I put a definition in there of how that works. Deborah obviously can speak much better to that than I can. We have to, what do you say, pay for it?
Yes, this, because we don't have an appropriation, so we have to use the unqualified grant fund and once we make the purchase, then this federal government sends voucher. They made it a lot easier doing this voucher than, as opposed to a federal grant, which be a lot more administrative, big work. So this is regardless of the, of everything, it's really pretty impressive to see that they've actually found a way to make something easier on us. Yeah, and, and it really just came out as we, we have I forget what they called it, but basically we've set aside seventy seven thousand dollars from Bellknap County. If you want it, send in an application and tell us if you want to do a full loan grant or do you just want a voucher? And so, yeah, this this is a great opportunity to get a project that I know John would love to have, which was going to be not at probably the top of the priority list for raising taxpayer money for. But if we can get this voucher and take care of it and have the whole county consistently on one control system.
So this will pay for the system and won't come out of taxpayer money.
Right.
Are there any strings attached to this voucher that we don't know about?
Well, there are none that we, that we do know about. No, there are no strings attached. This is a buy it and we will bring virtue as long as it qualifies.
Okay.
So they're under review. I, we have every reason to believe it's going to be qualified. So I really need permission to.
Yeah, so my, yeah, my request is one permission to apply and then also accept it and I will bring bids to you at another meeting to report.
I, I'll make a motion that we accept John's request. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you. Last one, please, and then you can get rid of the main.
Oh, we're in such a rush.
You pick that pocket, so.
The last thing is more just an FYI to let me know of a situation that's going on with the courthouse. Back in two thousand twelve, a lot of the heating system in the courthouse was replaced, but a lot of things during that design were left out, I guess, to keep it safe, the project and keep it going. So there's been a big lack of heat in the courthouse, a lot of very cold people. And this is on the level of courthouse where probation and parole deeds, county attorney, that area, not upstairs in the courtroom floor. So we had people bringing in electric space heaters and we had a fire. So I pulled the plug on, literally pulled the plug on, people bring space heaters in. Literally the next day after the space heater was removed, people were bringing in electric blankets. Because I didn't say that they couldn't bring in electric blankets, so. So my number one goal, basically all my goals for this budget have shifted to getting this problem addressed. So I've had to hire WV engineering to do a design. And basically what we're going to end up doing is adding two hundred and eight linear feet of fin du radiation around the perimeters of those office spaces and other areas to get more heat into the courthouse. You know, unfortunately, it's an eighteen ninety three building. It's brick. It's not insulated. It's only going to be as good as it's going to be at some point. Estimate, the estimate on the project is about seventy five thousand dollars. And I've held off on every single project that's been approved in my budget. Because this is, you know, something I need to get rectified this summer and before heating season. So this is just me coming here, that's what's happening and all my priorities are shifted and kind of the road I'm headed down right now.
So if this expansion of the heating system is completed, what impact will it have on the annual heating costs? Could it actually create savings with additional efficiency? Maybe the thermostat won't have to run as hot because there's more even distribution of heat. Are we going to be having higher energy costs?
You know, we, we, when we put the energy management system down there and reached those boilers, we, we immediately started achieving savings. I mean, we manage the temperature down there. We only allow temperatures of sixty eight to seventy four degrees down there. So we control the climate down there now, where people before could just set it or whatever they wanted to. So that's definitely helpful, but yeah, there's a chance that we're adding more heat, we're using more natural gas. It's going to cost, it's going to, probably at the end of the day, cost more money.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we're going to have that new basement fixed up and offices and this. We're going to have added heating and cooling costs down there too from all that new square footage anyway.
You know, the part of the problem is some of those windows that are at the courthouse, there's fifty nine windows that are original to eighteen ninety three. And, you know, they're single pane leaded glass. They're not insulated and they're cold. Not only are they cold, but they're four feet wide and nine feet tall.
Yeah, they are.
You know, someday the county needs to do a legalization project on the courthouse. But that's not going to happen this summer.
Well, we manage another part grant over the next couple of years.
Yeah.
I think we have earmarked some of those resources. Those just steal heat.
I mean, I think if we're able to somehow build into our capital improvements plan, maybe at least start working on replacing windows or something.
Yeah.
That would be an immediate help.
Do you have an approximate cost per window replacement with the fifty nine?
You know, that's a huge range because, you know, I think as a county, we would want to maintain the historic look of the building.
I'm going to say, yeah.
And not take away from it. And not only that, but the inside has got such beautiful millwork to it that we want to keep and maintain. So it's, you know, a lot of very selective demolition and putting things back. So it's, it's individual.
I, I don't think it's, because I was thinking initially, you know, if we have a good year next year, maybe we can phase in five or ten windows a year, you know, in the next five or six years, replace the fifty nine. But on the other hand, it sounds like it's going to be too heavy of a load.
I've talked to Martin Windows, which is the windows here at the county, and, you know, they would love a project. They could even like, we can make the windows period correct as you want.
Yeah, what cost?
It costs a big bucks. I mean, they were throwing numbers of like one point two to one point five million dollars for fifty nine windows. Now, keeping in mind this lead is asbestos, not just windows you can chuck in the dumpster.
Right up there with the skylights at the nursing home.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big deal.
Okay.
So you said you have to reshift priorities. So which priorities are going to move towards the bottom of that list and maybe?
All of them. Such as? Is all the doors with the jail that I had in there. Carpeting and probation and parole and new age cooperative extension. I've even thought about canceling one of the paving projects, seal coating, crack filling and line striping to add toward it. But they haven't scheduled it yet, so I've been dragging my feet on it because I want to get the design from the engineer and then put it up the bid and come with real numbers. So I've just put the brakes on everything right now.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. We'll see you next time.
Yes, sir.
And next up, we have Sheriff Bright. Sheriff, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good, good. No complaints here.
Did you get back from the big trip to Texas?
Yes, so Chief Deputy and I did make it out to Houston and back. It did take us four whole days to get there and back, but it was good and.
Ten gallon hat or cowboy boots, man?
No, didn't have to do that, but we did get the chance to stop off at a friend's place and he's in Gonzalez, Louisiana. So he's the sheriff of Zonchion Parish, which is right between Baton Rouge and New Orleans. And it was ten hours from Knoxville, so it, it was like a perfect time for us. We drove sixteen hours the first day down to Knoxville and then stayed the night and then drove down to Centium Parish. Ten hours, stayed the night, and we got to, to meet up with a, a National Sheriff's Institute friend of mine and got to see what he does down there and how he does it. I really like the way he does his budgeting process. He actually does, he does one point five percent of the gross county revenue, which is equating to about fifty five million. And he just gets it. He doesn't really have to do much more than just say, I want one point five percent. So it was quite interesting.
Yeah, things are different down there, aren't they?
So his, his operations command center consisted of two vehicles. One of them was a tractor trailer unit, which was basically an old Coke slide up unit. And that one was designed for hazardous chemical incidents. And then the other one was a big, I don't know, it was like a coach bus that had pretty much everything in there. So it was, it was pretty spectacular to see, but listen, we're happy with what we have and it's going to be even better when we get it back sometime in August. So we'll wait and do the two thousand mile trek at that time. The reason that I'm before you today is I'm requesting a budgetary transfer. Well, the first request is a budgetary transfer for our detail line. So as you're aware, our office, we, we help out local departments doing details here and there. We have some of our own details that we do, such as like places up at Gunstock. This year has been a very dramatic as it relates to our ability to help out local departments, especially as they have difficulty in filling their, their traditional patrol spots. We're able to help with these infrastructure projects and all that by having some of our deputies work these details. Initially, I budgeted forty seven five for the for the details and we have spent forty seven five. So at this point, I come before you asking for a transfer from, from the contingency fund to, to be able to continue to do these details as needed. We turned down many, we stopped working details that weren't already scheduled about two weeks ago. And we continuously receive a request for these details. I'm anticipating that we have about fifty thousand dollars worth of details for the remainder of the year that we could in fact be part of. I don't necessarily consider this an emergent process because, again, we either agree to work details or we don't agree to work details. But what I can tell you is that details are a huge morale booster for the personnel that I have. They're also, we also have the ability to have deputies work these, whether they be part-time or, or full-time personnel. But they get to work these details and make a little bit of extra money. We're, you know, we're not throwing bonuses at them and things like that. So this is a good opportunity for us to, to give them a chance to make a little extra money. And all costs associated with working details is completely recovered. So their outside details, they're fully recovered and paid out to these deputies with that money that's, that's recovered. And you can see that I've included the detail to come invoice invoices and the places that we have worked so far this year. I'm pretty, I mean, we make revenue monies. So I see it as a, as a win for the county, as a win for the employees, as a win for these infrastructure projects that are going on regionally. And I, I honestly think it's a really good, good, good program and process. I could not have budgeted this. Like, this is the most amount of money that we've ever spent on details that I can recall of since I've been here at the sheriff's office for nineteen years. And I, I went back five years and, and I don't believe that we ever spent over the forty seven five for that, for that duration. And of course, two years were COVID years, so we, we, you know, so the, the details are very low. I just have very motivated people. We have, if you will, a perfect storm with law enforcement out there where they just don't have enough cops to fill the, the details that they're trying to fill. And, and I do. I'm fortunate enough to have people that can work them and we work them when we can. So I'm here to ask for additional funding to be able to continue the ability to help these communities out, work these details.
What's the detail right now?
So right now, we're paying fifty five dollars to the deputy, seventeen twenty to group two, eighty cents to Medicare. And, and the cost is about seventy three dollars and we're billing out at, I believe it's seventy five.
Like seventy-five without a cruise, seventy-five. I was gonna say, what do you, what do you add in if a cruise is used?
So if a cruise is used, it's, uh, it's twenty-five.
Ninety-five with a cruise.
Yeah.
Ninety percent, ninety-five percent.
What are the majority of these details done? They're during regular business hours, after hours, during the weekend?
All three. So there, again, it's as needed. So if they have a, a major crash on a midnight shift and a, you know, a telephone pole gets taken out, they need a detail officer, they'll call.
So what's the majority of the forty-seven-five?
Most of it's during the day shift, Monday through Friday.
Most of your, your deputies are Monday through Friday. So are they taking vacation days or how are they?
Yep. So, so we have a combination of, um, they rearrange their scheduling. If they're full-time deputies, they rearrange their scheduling. So we're still, uh, getting up forty hours. So they work days and evenings.
What do you mean rearrange their schedule?
So, well, so the, there's no fixed schedule for deputy sheriffs. So we have paperwork services and we have late transports and things that happen during the evening shift or during the, you know, early, uh, evenings that we can get done with these deputies and they do that. We also have a, a contingency of hard-time staff that are, uh, retirees that predominantly this is their income is, uh, through these details. So according to the contract, the, the, uh, full-time deputies have first, uh, write a refusal for details. Um, so if they, if they agree to them, then they take them. If they're, they're not available, then they do not. Now, we have other details that are also open. So we have, uh, Saturday night cruises with, um, uh, the Mount Washington, which we do all summer long, uh, that's every Saturday night. Sometimes if they have a chartered, uh, cruise throughout the week, uh, again, during the evening shift, uh, they, they can contract us out. Uh, we also do Lake Shore Park and, um, there's one other one that we do. Which one's the one that we do, Jim, with, uh?
You did that one.
Sammason, Sammason. So sometimes we'll work Sammason as well, uh, with, again, they contract us out. So we do a combination of, um, again, working the shifts. So paperwork service does not have to be done necessarily during the day. It can be done in evenings. As a matter of fact, we reap the benefits of doing it sometimes in evenings because the people work during the day, they're not available. We're able to, to allow the deputies to, to change up some scheduling. And again, we know what we have, uh, predominantly for transports and things throughout the day that we need to get done. So during the evening time, we can get other work done as well. So warrant service is twenty-four seven. So they.
So are they taking vacation or, or paid time off and?
They can, yes.
Do details?
Yep, they can. So it's not a requirement.
No, I, I understand it's not a requirement.
So they're.
But not merely what's happening?
It's a combination. So it all depends on what the deputies are working.
Time, forty percent of the time, sixty percent done?
Chief, so I would say some of these shifts are split between officers. So, uh, if the deputy is working on early morning transport from Rapid County and he has to leave his house at five-thirty to get up there and need a prisoner back for court for eight-thirty, um, then he would, he might work half a shift at the end of the day. So he worked his hours in the morning and he would head out early and work one of these shifts. So deputies will split eight-hour shifts to details. And but for the most part, they're, they're shift adjusting to make these happen. Uh, but we're able to achieve that between night service, night warrant service and, uh, splitting the details. So.
He deals, he deals with the scheduling.
So my question is, are they using vacation time? And then going and doing detail? And if so, what percentage of details is that happening? That, that's my question.
So I don't see the, I don't see the, uh, I don't, I don't see their payroll. So the chief, that's like.
So I would say that they're not always using vacation time or right comp time, but they do sometimes use their recruit time.
Ten percent, fifty percent, twenty, twenty-five percent, I mean, a ballpark number.
Yeah, uh, probably fifty, fifty, um, it depends.
Fifty percent of the time. So fifty percent of this forty-seven-five, we've paid vacation and we've paid detail to the office, to the deputy. Is that, is that fair?
It, it may be less than that. I think that most of the time you're seeing shifts swap. So they're doing forty hours in of work we and not necessarily taking, uh, leave time to go.
I'm confused.
Yeah, so fifty percent in that, in that explanation that you're asking for, which is, it's not.
Roughly fifty percent.
Uh, I would say.
Roughly half the time deputies taking vacation and we're paying them.
Well, in, in, in some capacity, but again, the sheriff mentioned that hard-time people come in, they will work.
Yeah, I, I get it. I mean.
So that's, that's a.
And I'm not saying that they shouldn't. I'm just trying to get the information.
Right, I'm trying to give it to you, but so I do talk fifty percent of full-time people? Or are you talking, because of part-time people wouldn't factor into that. So of the full-time people that do work these details?
Right.
They're seventy-five percent shift adjusting and twenty-five percent taking earn or comp time or something that will earn leave time.
Okay, so twenty-five percent.
Yeah, I would say that's closer to this.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't, I don't see, I don't approve the payroll that, that portion of the payroll. So I don't see the hours.
Yes, okay.
But I see the work productivity. And again, we're, we're eighty-four percent above, um, statistical data. So it's not like we're losing work. It's not, it's not that they're um, not doing certain work that they're required to do and, and that they're filling it with details. And vacation time is burn time. And as far as I'm concerned, if they wanna burn a vacation day to work a detail, uh, I'm good with that because that's a liability to me. So, um, they wanna burn that vacation day, that's one less vacation day that they can take in a different time and they're, they're helping the local communities out, uh, fill these shifts that need to be filled. And, and a lot of times too, we started, so we're, we're kind of that second department, uh, in the, in the line of phone calls for state police when they don't, uh, when they're not able to fill their details. They traditionally will call us and ask us to help them fill details. And some of these are those, uh, large load details, like I've actually worked a couple of them where we, uh, provided escort, police escort with the big bridging, um, parts. And, uh, and again, their permits are, are limited and they, they normally, uh, try to coordinate it out and they don't have the flexibility of saying, well, we don't have a detail officer tomorrow. So, uh, so they, they really struggle to find people and, and we, we help fill that, which is again, infrastructure project. So, uh, we're doing a lot of work up in, uh, Center Harbor, uh, part in, in Meredith, uh, as part of their fiber optic, um, expansion. So, you know, again, we're working with them and, uh, you know, the chief up there, he's, he's called a few times over the last couple of weeks, asking if we have details. I said, no, not until, you know, we figure out what we're gonna do after this meeting. So, um, you know, we're all here doing the work and, and, uh, normal work productivity supports that. I'm not asking for bonuses or anything else. These people are working and I wanna continue that, uh, supporting our communities. So they're all the communities that you people represent. So, uh, you know, I put it back to the commission to say, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to continue to offer these personnel this opportunity to work these details and, um, help our community as well as helping our personnel out.
No, I have no problem with details. Are you guiding against, and, and I know officers would, the deputies would, probably that's a good rate and tend to wanna not take vacation time, but work their shift and then work a detail. Um, are, are you guiding against people that work in sixteen-hour days? You know, keep, not, not letting them take an eight-hour detail and then work for the midnight. So in essence, they work sixteen hours that day. That'd be the only thing I'd.
Yeah, so we, we keep track of, of safety-related issues. And in the chief deputy here, again, he's the one that's doing a lot of the operational stuff. So, uh, that has come up in, in conversation that we don't want our personnel working too much. Um, and luckily, we can, we, we have a system that we can break down and see exactly who's worked what for details. Um, this is not deputies working, uh, significant amount of details, uh, in conjunction with their shifts. What it is, is we've gone almost five months and we've been working details basically from the first of the year and it just hasn't stopped. Uh, you know, we, we could have one deputy work in a detail one day every, every day this week, uh, doing different projects. Again, it's just, um, it's like the floodgates opened up on details and in towns and their requirements to have a detail for a lot of these, uh, you know, a detail officer for a lot of these have, have become prevalent. And, and again, we're fully staffed and we have part, again, some of this is filled by part-time personnel, which I, I can always pull, I can pull whatever numbers you want. Uh, you know, if you want individual deputies to find out who's making one and all that, I can most certainly do that, but.
That, that, that's not what I want. I just wanna just make sure people aren't working, you know, sixteen hours.
Right.
That's all.
No, I, I completely agree. So is there a time that they could work sixteen hours? Yep, there, there could be time, but I, but it's not a regular, um, a regular occurrence. Uh, in these, and again, because they make decent money, they're not, they're not, they're doing this to have supplemental income, not to have a living income. So there was a day that I remember working doubles, back to back, because I'm, I'm trying to make the extra money, right? They don't have the same, uh, problems nowadays. And again, I, I use this as a good leverage for our personnel to say, you know, you have the ability to, to make extra money and and you're doing it at a, at a decent rate and, uh, and the rates are good too. So, uh, what we're paying out today versus what we were paying out back then are completely different. Um, you know, I remember my Franklin days making nineteen dollars an hour at a detail. And that was good money back then. Now, now they're making fifty-five dollars an hour.
I remember.
Yeah, so it's significantly different. Um, so what we know to make that amount of money is completely different than what they know today.
Thank you.
Now, don't forget that we have places like BikeWish, right? Where we, we do hill climb. And that's one day and we can spend ten grand in that one day. Because most of the deputies are working the hill climb for that one day. That's ten grand. So even out of fifty thousand, that's ten grand. It's one-fifth of that request, uh, and that's one day.
You don't use that as a regular workday for them?
No, no, it's the detail because that's a private event. And they start, and they charge to have that private event. So it is a, it is a private, uh, private venue.
Deborah, the way this request is structured, is there, do you see any pathway where the county can incur additional costs down the road? The, the income, the, the payment for the detail will always offset any expense?
It won't, it, it won't, it will at least cover it.
Okay, uh, Bill, not that it would ever color my opinion one way or the other, but just out of curiosity, if I took a poll among the county chiefs, would any of them feel or say to the commissioners, you know what? We can handle our own business. We don't need the sheriffs to run through more details.
Well, we're not out soliciting. So all the details that we've worked have been details covered because they have had the first right to refuse and they've fallen us. So these are not, so I, I would say that any police chief that calls and asks us to work details, I mean, we haven't even started Meadowbrook yet. Uh, and we don't predominantly work a lot of Meadowbrook, but that's gonna take a lot of resources, uh, from our local departments here, uh, which will then open up more details. So it's a, it's a constant thing right now. I, I've never seen it quite like this. So, uh, where there's been, it's just been so fruitful for, for details where I've never seen it. And I, Glenn, I know you've worked here for quite a while. I mean, of course, uh, administrator, like, just haven't, I don't know, this is, it's a different world right now. So, um, and we have the advantage to do this. Again, if our personnel were not, uh, were not as high-speed as they are, I probably, you know, if, uh, if our work product was low and, and that thing would deficient, I'd probably have a different conversation and say, yeah, we probably don't need it. But, uh, these are super high-speed people and they're, they're picking this right up. So.
The world is getting more different every day. Is there a motion to grant the sheriff's request?
I'd like to hold off until after we do the financial review.
Sheriff, conscious?
I wouldn't.
I mean, I would like to, I know we have a finance review ahead of us that we'll go through. I would just like to have the time to review that before.
Okay.
I, I make, uh, either make a motion or say yes to transfer funds out of, uh, the unanticipated expense line.
How long will it take us to get that done?
Well, we're gonna do it tonight.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We'll send the documents for tonight.
Okay.
Something like saying that.
It's later in the meeting.
Later in the meeting. We'll put this on hold until, uh, we speak with Lori, Sheriff. That's, we can move on to your.
Okay, the next thing would be, uh, requests, uh, for authorization, assign the Exocom contract and agree that we're gonna continue with that. So the Exocom is the, uh, audio recording device that we use for our, uh, radio transmissions and our telephone conversations and dispatch. And, uh, we've had it for, uh, twenty years, at least over twenty years now. Exocom is a New Hampshire-based company. We want to refurb the current, uh, Exocom. It, it was requested in the budget, approved in the budget. Uh, so I'm asking for the permission to continue to stay with them, um, and to get the refurbishment done. I would consider this a continuation of a contract with the added, uh, caveat of a re, rebuild of the system uh, versus, uh, putting it out to bid and, and asking for a new system. So that's fifteen thousand, seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents. I do not recommend to go with the quoted, uh, N A S, uh, backup. We, we have other alternatives that we can utilize for backup. We don't need to spend that kind of money.
And we budgeted fifteen one.
So it's, the full amounts are in the budget, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
All in favor? I, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then the third thing is the, um, a request for cruiser purchase. Uh, again, I put in and submitted and got approved for two, uh, cruisers this year. We've done the, um, uh, because we go by state bid for cruisers, uh, I don't have to request to have it, um, approved with state bid. You guys had approved that back a couple of meetings ago. Uh, so the, the state bid is actually at forty-two, eight ninety. Uh, we did talk to, um, a couple of different, uh, places here in New Hampshire that, uh, we tried to get cruisers to see what they had for availability. Uh, right now, everything localized, uh, we have to order them and have them come in. McGovern, uh, Municipal HQ has again, some leftovers from last year, uh, exact configuration that we're looking for with a couple of additional things, uh, such as heated mirrors and fleet heat at, uh, forty-two thousand, eight sixty-five, thirty-five, which again, does beat the, uh, the state bid. Uh, but they are, they are twenty-three's, not twenty-four's. Now, we purchased, uh, two sets of vehicles, uh, from McGovern in kind of the same fashion, which we always, uh, tend to save. Also, uh, I would request that the equipment, outfit, herd classification be awarded to, uh, New England Vehicle Upbidders, which was sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, we did have free, uh, bids on that as well. Um, Ospe Mountain Electronics, I know that, uh, Commissioner Hodgins had asked about, uh, OME before. So we made sure that we, um, you know, sent the information out to them, asking them to, uh, to submit a bid. Uh, their bid was again, a little bit higher, uh, and part of that was because they don't do the graphics and that they, uh, they quote them out. Also Motorola radios, uh, we put the Apex radios in there. It's sole source. Motorola only sells Motorola and we have to actually purchase it directly from them. And that's fifty-nine, fifty-nine ninety-eight or something like that. So I put it at six thousand. Just, just in the event of anything. So I'm recommending to the commissioners that you authorize the purchase, two cruisers from municipal, uh, government, govern, municipal HQ, authorize the, uh, outfit purchase from Nevo and authorize sole source, sole source purchase of mobile radios from Motorola distributor who is two-way communications. They're, they're the vendor that we would traditionally go through.
And these are on a lease program?
Yes, they would be the three-year lease program. And I would ask, um, that, uh, our CFO, uh, Lori, go ahead and, um, you know, do the bid process or whatever she's gonna do for, um, the lease program.
A refresh on them, where is Nevo located?
Uh, so they have, uh, they're ultimately in, uh, Newington. Their, their main shop is in Newington, right across from the, uh, Buxton Mall.
And they do their graphics in-house?
So no, they have a company that they, that they have contracts with that they do that, uh, but they included it in the bidding. So that's why, that's why I wrote it like it was.
So this would be the total price for everything that I'm coming to, a hundred and eight thousand, eighty-nine dollars. And then that will be sent to the leasing company and whatever the finance rate. So we'll be pretty close.
Yes, it'll be close. Yeah, we leaned out on the, uh, budget this year. So it'll be closer.
Quote of eight point six nine from Ford today. Uh, so the rates are pretty high. There is another company that we have financed with in the past, um, with the nursing home boss specifically. They typically comment lower. I'm still waiting to hear from them.
Is that the same company we went with a couple of years ago with, uh, it was one that you went with a couple of years ago. Okay, yeah, yeah. They, they actually came in a lot quicker.
If we wanted, once Billy, how long would it take to get them now?
I, I didn't even inquire for that. They just, they said that the cutoff date's coming up though, if we want to order. So Ford does a cutoff of municipal vehicles where they no longer produce anymore. So, uh, I didn't even ask just because McGovern said that they had them in, in stock and and the price point was right. So. And we're in no rush. So if, if you folks say, let's not do this today, whatever, like, our vehicles are still running, we're still maintaining. Um, and, and now that, uh, again, I took your advice from last year and I have like a spare vehicle that I kept and didn't auction off. So we, we have some flexibility in this. Uh, I can tell you that the price is gonna be, the price for the vehicle itself is gonna be what it is for, for state bid. That's.
I have no problem getting twenty-three's instead of twenty-four's.
I think it's better, especially those interest rates.
Yeah.
So there's no benefit to waiting then, obviously. Okay. Okay, um, you have a motion. I'll make a motion. All in favor?
I.
I, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. And so we'll get back to you shortly.
Stick around.
Yep, please do.
Yeah.
Hi Lori, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Good thanks.
Right, so first thing you have to look at is the revenue. And these were updated, the revenue and the expense was updated um, last week. The revenue, the general fund revenue report is reporting a surplus of. A hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred dollars, a thousand of that. It's an administration under insurance rebate and reimbursement, seventy-five thousand of the surpluses in finance with continued favorable interest rates. Um, they have not gone down, they in fact continue to go up.
What's that number, Lori?
In the finance department, seventy-five thousand.
Oh, the uh, the favorable interest rate you.
Uh, it's five point five at the moment. Or at least last week. Ninety-one thousand surpluses projected in the sheriff's department and eighty thousand of that is the outside detail. Um, obviously, uh, some of this is, or that specifically is dependent on what happens um, with the outside detail. And fifteen thousand is in health and human services recoveries line. Um, to date, we've. Uh, got it at forty-eight percent and um, that should actually exceed by about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that is offset by a projected shortfall in, I hate to say they say it's early in the year, so, but it's. Offset by a projected shortfall in deeds of twenty-one thousand um. And corrections of eight thousand and um, those are based obviously on numbers that we've. Collected to date and um, as in, I think years past, that can turn around. It's still early in the year. Uh, the nursing home revenue is projecting a shortfall of five hundred and sixty thousand. Again, this is based on numbers. As of last week, um, it's early in the year. Um, a six hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit in Medicaid. Is really the the predominant reason for this issue. Um, that's offset by a thirty-three thousand dollar surplus in private pay. Um. And something to mention here is that we are owed um, some. We have receivables for the Medicaid specifically because the state. Is behind on processing claims, um, and so that is something that's been addressed with them. And we are starting to see the money coming in for that. And it's just that they're behind on processing claims that have been sent to them. As far back as uh, November and in December even.
And that's the cause of the six hundred and forty thousand?
That is the partial reason why the Medicaid line is showing us a shortfall, yes, because we're waiting for those funds.
So we haven't, we haven't recognized the revenue, but we've got a receivable?
Oh, yeah, you know what? You're right. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're absolutely right. We have recognized that revenue. Um, so. Yeah. We're just not taking in, we're just not taking in. Well, but we recognize, no, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry, that's my my fault. We are recognizing the revenue at the time of the billing, but so, so.
Why did, why, why are we so far off?
There.
By the time I thought we were pretty solid on.
I'm gonna have to go back to the drawing board on this one.
Okay.
Because I.
Please do.
Yeah, well, so you're you're one hundred percent correct. We recognize that revenue at the time of billing and um. This is based on, clearly. Yeah, so that would lead to thinking that the billing was behind.
Right, so what's the discrepancy?
We don't know.
I have to go back to billing and talk with them again and find out.
We have a meeting Monday, so maybe we can find out by then.
Yes. I will make one. I'll talk to them tomorrow. For the, I don't know who I'm making plug for, but I sat in on a very frustrating call, which is. Uh, there have been many and I've in almost sixteen years, never sat in on one of these calls. Where our billing coordinators are trying to. Process and work cases with the State Department Health and Human Services, because we are not getting money that we are owed.
Right.
To the tune of over, well, it was close to two hundred thousand at that point, yeah. And and it is the most infuriating thing, uh, not only to us, because we're not collecting the money. But what they're putting uh, residents and their families through, absolute chaos. Um, simple little things like the, like uh, my my daughter accidentally submitted her bank statement instead of mine. And it took the state six months or so to get to acknowledge that it was maybe wrong. And instead, every meeting is just, we're working on it, we're working on it. Sorry, we're backed up so far, we can't get to it. Um, and then a resident passes away and they say, um, oh, that person has deceased, we can no longer speak to you. Well, well. Misinformation. And it was amazing, uh, and I opened really, and extremely disturbing to see that. Yeah, and I I, so I really did, I was, I think, very combed in on that, though, but um. Sorry, yeah.
Cash flow, not a revenue.
Right. Um, yeah, misinformation.
I know it's really, it's early. Do we have any indication from Gunstock yet about this three hundred thousand of whether. Their, their year is going to be able to handle that or whether they. Not have a successful year.
I don't, I haven't heard anything. I mean, we could reach out that their year end is June.
No, I think it's tomorrow.
Yeah, it'll be lighter than last year.
It's either March thirty-first or April thirtieth, is their fiscal year end. And it'd be good to know whether that's.
Realistic.
Correct.
Yeah. Do that. Yeah, so then the, the total bottom line and obviously, you know, I'll find a why. I mean. The numbers that are in here are sure, are certainly like the, they're, the year-to-date revenue is completely, that is what it is. Um, but we'll look back at, at more of a why. Um, so at the moment, then we're projecting a shortfall. On the bottom line for revenue of four hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um. And again, I have a note here that says it's obviously early in the year. Uh, deeds and the nursing home, we've seen nursing home before, it it goes back and forth. So. We'll keep that updated and I'll put that in information, so. Alright, um, the expense. Uh, the county convention is on track at twenty-four percent. The county attorney's office is on track at twenty-eight percent. Um, however. Uh, obviously, there may be some movement on wages due to staffing changes that have gone on there that, as we know. Um, I am waiting for any new hire information before I make updates, because obviously that's gonna have a, a large impact. Potentially on uh, health insurance and things like that.
As well as, there should be some savings in the wage line.
Um, potentially, there would be some savings in the wage line, um.
Person, right, so.
We are, yes.
Some savings there.
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll be, but right, and there might be some savings in the health insurance, you know, it's just the moving target that we don't know. Um, so I'm gonna have that all updated once we get some. Solid information on that. Um, the county administration. And it's projected to have a five thousand dollar deficit. If that's due to the legal services line, expecting to go over budget. Um, there is no other place at the moment in the budget to make that up. Um, and I actually have a transfer request myself, which we'll talk about later. Um. So that's. We're waiting on that right now. I T is on track at twenty percent. Finance is projecting a thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollar deficit, and that is due to the staffing change when we log that. Renewal boy today. Um. That is uh, predominantly due to the health insurance change. So there was a change with that. Um, that's also gonna be part of this request that I have as a transfer, which I'll present to you later. Deeds is projecting a surplus of three thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars at the moment. Um, and that's because of a savings in the final restoration project that she had. Um, the invoice was less than what was originally planned. County maintenance is projecting a deficit of fifteen thousand dollars. Um. Obviously, John talked pretty extensively earlier about uh, the projects in the department, what's going on there. And he's reworking um. Some items, and so this fifteen thousand is expected to be made up within that budget. It is due to repairs, um, in the firehouse, parts, the leak that was there, and also some repairs to the. Existing um, heating unit. The sheriff's department is projecting and um, obviously, they just talked about this, but is projecting a fifty thousand dollar deficit. And that's due to the overage on the outside detail line. Um. And just to speak a little bit more to that, um. At the moment, I don't see another line anticipated to cover that kind of an overage. Um, if there is a lower percentage within here, for instance, uh, you might see like tower rental is at one percent. It's. Predominantly because the purchase became made, the project isn't completed yet, it's too early in the year and that will all catch up. Um, we could probably go back to the particular budget and scrutinize it a little bit further. But I haven't had time to do that, obviously, since the report not that long ago. Um, but that's, what I'm seeing is at the moment, I'm not finding a line in that budget where there's an excess. Uh, of fifty thousand dollars. Well, and if the transfer is not approved tonight, there won't be any overage. That projected amount really. That is true. Be forty-seven-five at this moment. That is correct.
Right.
Yeah. So, so exactly right. So the, the projected, the line. The outside deeds, the line, projection includes. The fifty thousand that's.
Correct.
Expected, yes. So if that, okay, so if that was backed out, then that line or that budget would not have a. Um, correction is projecting a small. Uh, deficit. I know that Michelle made a report earlier. I think I updated this last week. I don't know if it was after. That one, but that's something that's small. It's on the dues and subscriptions line and it could be absorbed within that budget. Um. There's no question in my mind of that. Uh, with storage deficit is on track at twenty percent. Health and human service bid is uh, on track, but we're gonna be getting an update in the next few months. And so um, that could go up or down. And as soon as we get that information, then we'll report back on that and we'll know. Where that's going to turn out and where it's going to need to go. And debt services is projecting a surplus of thirty-four thousand five thirty, um, and that's due to the interest rate, which was lower than. What we had initially budgeted for. Um, I, it was about a percent lower. Um, so the general fund overall projects the deficit of forty-six thousand five seventy-nine. Again, that includes. That added uh, projection of fifty thousand dollars in that outside detail line. So that is drawing that down, making it. Forty-six five seventy-nine deficit. If that was removed, then obviously it would be a deficit. With the transfers presented, and and again, this includes the sheriff's department transfer request. The transfer is that that are presented tonight were um, approved and the spending therefore. Continued in that line and the surplus on that bottom line would be twenty-two thousand four twenty-one. Um, the nursing home debt service is much the same as the general fund, the surplus and the interest of twenty-three thousand twenty-two. Administration. Administration has a nine hundred and eighty-five dollar deficit within the budget, um, or that would be actually able to be made up within the budget. Um, that is predominantly because the telecommunications line, enough of them budgeted than they are initially uh, for telephone services in. The nursing home. The maintenance, nursing home maintenance is projecting a ninety thousand dollar surplus. Um, and. That is due to the conversation earlier in regards to the sprinkler system. Um, being removed from that capital, or at least reduced from that capital projects line, um. And deducted uh, due to the reworking of that project. The rehab services is on track at twenty percent. Dietary is on track at twenty-four percent. Nursing is projecting a deficit of sixty-eight thousand five thirteen, um, and that's. Due to the open positions that we still require the services of contracted nursing. So you'll see that contracted nursing was expected um. To go over by sixty-nine thousand.
And the, and the wages were fully staffed for what we're budgeted for? There isn't gonna be any savings within the wage lines or any open positions that we haven't filled yet?
I don't believe the, oh, Dev, you're not gonna be able to answer that one better than me, but I don't believe that the. I I believe there was adjustments made for the open position. I would just say in this line. And we'll be better off looking to get this projected number. Right now, the projection is showing that we're gonna spend what was budgeted.
Right.
But if we actually took what we have spent in the first uh, fifteen weeks or sixteen weeks and extrapolated that out. That would give us a better uh, projection.
So.
Thank you, because that's my concern with this, with this projected column.
Yeah.
I've been a commissioner for eight years, worked here for four and. Not any of those years did we spend everything that was budgeted. So I I I've got some concerns that our year-end projections here might not be.
So you're saying you got on the age line.
Accurate as they can be.
Yeah.
And so I'm not gonna be in favor of making a transfer. For the sheriff and deputy sheriff come racing forward. It's not that I don't support. I absolutely support. The continued outside details. But I'm not comfortable making a transfer only a quarter of the way through the year when. We don't know where all of these budgets are gonna shake out. So I'm not, I don't want to be moving. Shells around many times through the year. I would feel more comfortable doing this and. As we get closer towards the end of the third quarter and we know where things have shaken up, but uh, again. In no way am I saying that I don't think that the sheriff's department should continue to provide details. Because it is a revenue generating operation, so.
So Lori, how firm is that sixty-nine thousand dollar deficit if it hasn't been offset by those vacant positions? So can we be certain we're gonna end up with the deficit at the end of the year, those positions they open?
I think Dev is looking at that now. I mean, we looked at it the other day and decided not to change that number, just because there's. Increases to take into consideration still, but. The, the agents, the temper, what do they call it, tempered, contracted nursing services. Is a good number. If we continue spending at that rate, which we have no reason believe that we're not going to. Then we're going to spend one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The nursing wages. That projection is probably, unless something, it's probably close, it is close, it might be three million. I'm I'm coming up with two point eight at the rate we've been spending this year, two point eight million. But we have many employees still to get wage increases. So even if we have no turnover, it'll be a little more than two point eight. I would say three million to be safe. So that only frees up about twenty-four thousand in there, but. And I will say that. Most wage lines, we, we do that way. Um, especially as the year, as we get later in the year. But this is such a big number. Um, you know, I I wouldn't, I don't think we're gonna go much below three million. That seems like a number, I mean.
Lori, let's talk about Commissioner Wary's concerns with this, the sheriff's budget transfer, forty-seven thousand dollars. We've determined that if the request is granted, it will be offset over time. With paid accounts from the clients who hired, who hired the outside details.
Correct.
On sheriff's department. The problem is, is we won't get that money right away. That money comes in over time, correct? So as Commissioner Wary said, that could potentially leave a bit of a hole in the deficit. In our budget going forward. Lori, is that, uh, Deborah, is that correct?
It's correct that, that the money comes in over time. I don't think that's the concern.
It's correct that, that the money comes in over time. I don't think that's the concern that
What's, what's, what's the concern then?
I, I'm not certain that, that the sheriff's budget is, is going to be overspent by exactly fifty thousand dollars, which is exactly what his request is. I, I there, there tends to be vacancies throughout a year in many departments that, that allow for
For transfers.
For some save, for some savings within a department. And so when we come down to the, you know, when we come down to September, October, detail season's over. We have a better line that, then maybe it's a twenty thousand dollar transfer to, into the department to, to balance the budget, but I mean right now, to, for me to transfer fifty thousand dollars into the sheriff's budget, that then we know that the sheriff has full authority and any other department head has full authority to spend that bottom line, then I mean, I'm just, I'm not comfortable doing that only a quarter of the way in, into the year, but I still want the sheriff to continue to, to do the details to the tune of ninety seven thousand dollars worth of of expensive revenue, right? I mean,
The only thing
I just don't, I, I don't want to be moving shelves many times throughout the year. And I just feel like we're, we're a little early looking for transfers when I, I mean, I, I'm going to say it, I'm going to kind of regret when I say it. I, I mean, I, I hear Mike Sylvia in that, hey, you're asking for transfers, but there's still clearly plenty of money in the budget, so why are you coming asking for transfers within your department? And I, I agree with that. I, I agree with that premise. The department is not, and there isn't any department that sits right now that is short of funds. We know we have the availability of, of two hundred thousand of, of unanticipated expenditure line that we, we can balance budgets when we get there, when we need to get there. But if two others feel differently, then go ahead and make the motion and pass it, but that's, that's where I, that's where I philosophically am with this.
Would, would you feel better if we necessarily didn't give the full amount, but gave them half enough so details could continue for a while?
I am completely comfortable with, with authorizing those to continue without a transfer.
Are adequate funds available to the sheriff to address the busy season, because the next four or five months are the times when he'll be able to hire out
Correct.
Detail services.
Correct.
If, if he gets the bundle of money in October, there will be
He doesn't need, right, so he, he's going to get the bundle of money when, when his budget is overspent, but I'm saying that we're going to earmark up to fifty thousand dollars, but if it's needed. But I don't see where we need to make that today. It's my point.
I understand your point. My concern is that he may be hamstrung in terms of being able to hire out for those detailed services without the request. Deborah, is that correct, or am I in, in error here?
Well, I, I think there's some concern that if he doesn't get the transfer, he goes ahead and over and extends or overexpends his budget. Um he doesn't have a lot of lines that he can decide not to spend at that point, like the cruisers. If, if you're not going to grant a transfer tonight, then something different operationally wouldn't have to happen, I think. Um or he's going to be on a wing and a prayer, just good faith.
So I'm not, I'm not willing to go out on a wing and a prayer. Uh I know what my budget is. I know it intimately. I know that um I anticipate no vacancies uh going forward. And I can tell you that my budget has no fluff in it in order for me to even think that I might have some contingencies someplace. So um I, I'm, I'm very conservative with my budget. I came before you because I, that line is an elective. I can elect to allow my deputies to continue to work details, but I'm not willing to take that risk at the rate that we're being requested. I do not feel comfortable that I'm going to have fifty thousand dollars of surplus somewhere in my budget. And guess what? I am a bottom line guy, and I am an elected official, so I have to be cautious at making sure I stay within there, and I most certainly will not cut employees at the end of the year. If, once I spend this money, again, we have things that are, that are going on that um within our budget that are moving parts. I just don't feel comfortable doing that. And I waited to come before you while I expended that line. If you folks decide that you're not going to uh approve a transfer, I will not uh continue working uh details or asking my deputies to work details, because I, I just can't risk that. Now, we come towards October, and I have extra money in the budget, then maybe I can open details then. Does our community no good at this point?
Well, the demand won't be there for those services, correct?
Say that again, sir.
The demand won't be there, Bill, in October.
Perhaps, I don't know. We didn't think that the man was going to be here between the first of the year and now. And we've, we've spent money like crazy because the work is being done. We couldn't have a hard winter this year. So details were, were continuing through. A fiber rocket can be run most certainly during the winter, things like that. So, so I'm not comfortable um allowing details to, to continue um without a transfer. I, I just can't do it. I don't want to take that risk of my normal operations. If this was last year, I had, or two years ago, when I had deputy sheriffs that didn't want to work details and didn't want to work overtime and did, you know, they were looking for other jobs, and I, I would say uh differently, but I don't have that now. I, I have a phenomenal staff that want to work. This is part of their, uh, if you will, their bonus, right? So, so this is how they're making their money, is doing work for our community. That's what I encourage. That's the people I hired, and uh, and now I'm before you. That line is spent out. It's an elective line. Um I, I don't know what else to say other than uh my budget's pretty lean.
I, I could just, just looking at the difference here, the full-time sheriff's department wages are twenty eight percent. Um and we're twenty nine percent of the way through the year, so that says to me, those projections are pretty close. And some of his lines are a little, a little over. I guess I can see, I can see the problem here, because without authorization to transfer, he won't, he won't later in the year be able to make it up somewhere else.
Unless I have had my staff with, and then that, that defeats the purpose anyways.
Nobody's saying that, Bill.
No, 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 I get that. I
You're certainly insinuating that, and I don't appreciate it.
No, that's not what I'm trying to do.
So I'm glad to have the conversation, but
Sure.
Right, so as you look at the part-time wages line, part-time dispatcher, not part-time dispatcher's line, but, oh yeah, part-time dispatcher line, right, so there's a little bit of room there. You're at fifteen percent, right? So, so all I'm saying is that it's unrealistic to believe that we come to the end of the year that you're going to spend every single dollar that you, that's been budgeted. You've never done that.
Correct.
Right? So, so that's why I'm saying that we come to the end of the year, that I don't think the transfer is going to need to be fifty thousand dollars. I think it may need to be thirty thousand, twenty thousand, twenty five thousand. I, I, I don't know. But I'm, I'm certain that it's not going to be fifty, because you're not going to spend every dollar in your budget.
Okay.
Right? I mean, is that fair? Well, is that fair to say that, that the time that you've been sheriff, as well as times ever, all the other sheriffs, they've never expended the entire budget?
Correct.
All of the dollar.
Correct.
Right? So you're asking for a transfer fully to fifty thousand dollars, asking us to assume that you're going to spend every dollar of your budget. And we know that that's just not correct. So all I'm saying is I, I don't, I'm not opposed to the detail. I want the details to continue. I just want to transfer the correct amount when we know what that is to balance the budget. And that's all I'm saying.
Would you be comfortable if we, you know, I'm just shooting a dagger at the bullet and would transfer twenty five thousand? And to give that cushion, to get down to summer and see how things are going?
Pick a number, right? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what the number is. I, I, I really don't know.
How about if, if it turns out as the year, because to do a transfer is not a big deal. I mean, you're going to approve it, it's going to have to go to the executive committee, and they're going to make, hopefully orderly anyway. Um so if you transfer money now, and it turns out that we get, you know, down to the fall, and it looks like he's going to have a fifty or hundred thousand dollar surplus, let's transfer the money back, put it back.
You'd never hear me complain about that, because I give money back every year. I'm just not willing to take this risk. Honestly, I we're, you know, again, I look at the lines, I study the lines, and I'm just not convinced that this budget cycle is a budget where I'm going to have a lot of surplus, but I just don't, I, I honestly don't believe that. I just
And I don't blame you for that, but I, I want to see it. I don't want to see it shut right off now.
Either do I.
I'd like to see it continue to at least get through the summer, see where we are in the fall, and then maybe we can tell us.
But four months in, right? So, so we're at four months. And it's been the winter months, like we're already spent forty seven five, like I at this rate, and, and again, these companies, they call us and they tell us, we have a ton of work. We're going to work for the next five years at, at the rate that we're I, I cannot, um, and I have people going to work these, like they want to work them. Like, you know, as the chief had pointed out to me, what he did tell you is, we, we have a person that's on duty from noon to eight. From six A M. to noon, those people work details. That's timeframes, that's six hours a day, multiply that, you know, by five, it's so you start getting this process going. I, I just can't, I, I just don't feel comfortable continuing to do this. I know it's a revenue stream. And I even hate having this argument, because it is a revenue stream. And every year I've proven to the commission and to the delegation that when I have extra money, I return mine. Like, there's no, there's no lump spending, right? So I've been very responsible, very conservative with this. I just, at, at this rate, with my lines the way that they are, with our new radio network coming on and the fiber, and then the tower sites, um, you know, that we're still negotiating for, for um, you know, rent. The, these are all things that I'm taking into consideration, and I, there's certain critical infrastructure pieces that I have to make sure that we have plenty of money for. And if we weren't down to that critical timeframe right now, at, at, we've already spent forty seven five, then I wouldn't be before you right now, if, if we still had additional funds in that line, but I just honestly believe that we're going to spend uh fifty thousand dollars more in that detail line if that transfer was to happen.
So let me ask you this then, right? So you spent fifty thousand dollars in, in three months. Why is fifty, another fifty thousand dollars going to last you another nine?
Well, because this is
Thousand and up.
Well.
What if you need more?
Yeah, I think it's October is what I'm hoping, and that'll, that'll be the timeframe where, again
But if this, if this number is, is not is not appropriated enough to get the revenue, right? To, by this math, it's, it's telling us it's two hundred thousand dollars. To me, then that is, that's a supplemental appropriation for additional expense, additional revenue. There's no, there's no change in the tax burden. But it still, it still preserves two hundred thousand dollars of, of unanticipated expenditures for the rest of the county used for something that should happen, because we budgeted very lean across all departments. So if, if you get to, if we get to the end of, end of June, end of July, and you've spent this other fifty thousand dollars, you're going to come back to us again and say, hey, I need another fifty thousand dollars. At some point, we, we as, to me, we as commissioners need to preserve that two hundred thousand dollars for all departments, for the entire county. And it may be a, a conversation decision, hey, we, we need to go for supplemental appro, appropriation for another hundred fifty thousand dollars for outside detail and revenue that's going to far exceed the hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I throw that on the table, because, I mean, you, you make part, part of point that I've spent fifty in three months.
Right, four, four months.
Yeah, detail is going to continue.
Right.
Right, so a third, so we're, so a hundred fifty thousand total.
But I know that come uh four months from now, uh almost five months, when I come before you and say, okay, I'm out of, out of that money, I also tell my deputies that you people have made you know, that much money and all that stuff. So there's, you know, so there's some things there uh that
But if there's, I mean, if there's revenue to be made for the county, because the other departments can't provide the work, then we should be trying to do it.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just not
Revenue is going to be higher than the expense, so there, I mean, there's
I'm just not willing to take the risk by continuing to spend at the rate that's going, because I, again, I just don't see the, the cost savings in my lines in order to, to provide that. So that's why I'm asking for that transfer.
So we're spending about twelve thousand five hundred a month, right, Bill? Well, fifty, you know, divided, so it's twelve thousand five per month.
Yes.
You know, coming up to a hundred fifty thousand for the year then. So.
Yeah, it typically does slow down uh come, like, we won't have any more um Mount Washington details. We won't have uh
We haven't had, we haven't had those yet.
Right, that's why, so we're looking at the future here and trying to, trying to plan for that.
Right.
So uh those are like guaranteed details uh if we do it.
Which is above and beyond what you've already done at fifty thousand for the first four months.
Well, it is.
I mean, I think a hundred fifty is a, could be a real number.
Because you've got, you know, Meadowbrook, you've got the cruise. Lake Shore Park, you've got Lake Shore Park.
If you, if you appropriate, if you try, if you need to transfer some so they can get back to, back to work.
Right, that, that's all my, that's
Um and then, and, and these numbers, and it doesn't slow down, and there's a need to do a bigger chunk, then that's probably the time to do a supplement, to request that. At, at this point, there's no outs, outside details that stopped, which is, I think, the responsible thing to do, because you won't have anywhere else to make up for that.
So I We've denied working details for the last couple of weeks, because I'm not, again, I'm just not willing to, to take those risks.
If we did twenty five thousand, that's only going to buy us two months at this rate.
Well, that'll get you through Memorial Day, that'll get you through Motor City Week, the first six weeks of the Meadowbrook season.
Are you doing that on so?
No.
No.
Oh, you're looking at
Yeah, they, they have Guilford, Guilford and uh they get Manchester up here a lot, and some of the departments.
Okay.
So what I can tell you is we'll spend ten grand at uh, just at Hill Climb. Ten grand is Hill Climb.
At what?
At Hill Climb, so that's, that's one day of bike week, it's a Wednesday. Um that's traditionally ten grand.
And you'll be doing the Mount Washington starting Memorial Day?
I believe so. Do you know the date on that?
Yeah. And what's the expenditure for that by the end of July?
Um, meaning for, for um
So the season.
While we do five
The season at the mount.
Chief, do you know that? Uh, I'm trying.
Bill, the commissioners don't want you to turn away business.
No, I understand that. I, I just know that.
And it's not an argument, it's a discussion.
About ninety two hundred dollars. Put them out.
So the mount and the hill climb are twenty.
Yeah, just those two.
So I don't want to, I don't want to give up business either, because I know it brings a revenue.
It does.
Uh the downside is, is that, again, the budget is lean and um you'll get realized that we're going to get this many uh details, and details are electives, and there's something that we can control. Either we work them or we don't. Uh over time, I can't control that. You know, or, or at least do it really, like uh payroll and, and everything else, can't really control that, but I details are just something that um, again, they're a good bonus for the personnel, they're, they're a huge morale booster. And these people want to work them, and they're willing to work them, and we help our community, so uh that's why I asked for the transfer. I, I don't, um, if I had if I didn't believe that um, that we were not going to retain staff, or that we were going to uh not purchase something, or something's in the wind, then I would say, okay, I, I agree with that, but I, I honestly don't right now, this budget's pretty lean, and um and I've really budgeted things out to, unfortunately, be as conservative as I could. And that's why, that's why I come before you. So I know it's a revenue source, and I know that we have this opportunity to do this, but I'm just not willing to, to take the risk. Now, if it was if I got to uh, if there was enough money injection, what we could forecast, and, and again, forecasting details is kind of tough, except for the ones that we know are coming up. But if we continue to spending like we are, and, and let's just say we budgeted up until uh August, and then I gave the, the eighth month uh to review where I'm at in the budget, and see if I need another injection of money, or if we had some, enjoyed some cost savings somewhere, then, then great. You know, as I think Commissioner Waring is saying, but I, I just, I'm not willing to take the risk to try to spend, spend, spend until that timeframe, and then ask for it later. Uh because what in the event the answer's no? What if in the event, you know, that does come up?
Well, the fifty thousand would get you through August.
Yes.
Whether it's at that rate of spending.
Correct. And again, these are elective, so we can, we can most certainly uh, you know, if, if we want to slow business down, we can most certainly do that as well, say
That, that was going to be my other question.
You have that ability.
If, if you can say, we're going to spend X amount less per month, and try to stretch this money a little more, I mean, people are still working and you know.
I mean, what about part-time? What is your thought on that? We're all sitting here. It's fifteen percent spend, I mean is it, is it a potential that there's
What is the, what is the amount left in there?
Part-time wages, part-time dispatch, both always
Part-time dispatch is about ready to be spent on. We have a new uh person that is potentially uh going to be offered a job, and that will require training, so that's going to be at least four weeks of training, so that, there's going to be a big chip of money out of that.
I was looking more at part-time, because
Part-time deputies.
Part, yeah. Part-time deputy is budgeted at eighty nine thousand. To date, it's thirteen one, and it's fifteen percent spend. You've got seventy five thousand available.
So I have uh one part-time deputy that traditionally works two to three days a week.
Squad, squad deputies.
Oh yeah, squad deputies that work at least two days a month. And there's five of those.
Yeah, here's, here's my thought and recommendations to look at. To, to, I moved to, to motion to transfer twenty five thousand. And then, and then I would also ask that in thirty days, so our second meeting in May, we review these projections. Hopefully, we can get projections that Hopefully, we can get projections that are a little tighter. Say, to see where, where there might actually be five hundred, a thousand, something, right? We know there's going to be some small savings somewhere. And not just in the Sheriff's Department, but throughout the entire budget. Uh, and then reevaluate where we're at because I, I'm, I'm really leaning much more that of going the, the supplemental appropriation route for a hundred thousand dollars for this to, to absolutely give.
Just put it away.
Just to give, so we know we've got the funds to do all that he needs to do through December and, and reap one and a quarter uh, revenue on top of that. Right? So instead of trying to chase and move things around, so that's, that's my recommendation if, and if need so, I would make that motion.
I would feel a lot more comfortable with that as well.
Yeah.
So I, that's reasonable.
I'll, I'll touch on that.
For me, I just believe that it, it will get us a little bit closer. I just don't wanna spend too much.
Now, we're on the same.
Well, I, I believe we're all on the same page.
You can massage that a little bit, that twenty-five thousand, Billy. Maybe if you could stretch it another mu- you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
And I'm not, I'm not asking you to stretch anything because I want you to get the revenue. I don't.
And you know, I'll do it.
Stay, right, absolutely, right. So I mean, I believe we, we are all on the same page here and I understand your position that, hey, I'm an election official, I gotta make sure I, I. So are we and we just gotta look out for the entire county. So that's, that's where I'm at. Good.
And we will definitely update, you know, I'll take responsibility for that. I'll share it. Um, because.
I mean, we do talk about these.
We traditionally don't start drilling down these wages until later in the year.
Right.
But there's no reason we can't do it now. I just sat here and did that one line. We can have that done for the next meeting and have a much more accurate look at what it really looks like right now.
Yeah, and I really do think there might be some room in that part-time.
Fair.
There's probably a chance of that. And I can tell you that these people work in details, they're more quick and apt to change their shifts to accommodate the work product that might have been part-time deputy call-out, things like that. So, so we, we do have some benefit there. I'm just, at this point in the year, I'm just not willing to make that concession to say, you know, like I should continue spending as we are because I, I just don't wanna get caught.
Absolutely, we'll continue, we can continue doing things until we can look at it again.
Excellent. The goal is to have surplus again this year, right? That's what I always strive for and, and get our business done. So.
Right.
We have a motion on the table. Before I call the question, I wanna be clear that the commissioners have an expectation that you'll continue to do business as business is done and not turn away any business in the meanwhile. All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Twenty-five thousand.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome.
Okay.
Right, right, I'm, I think I'm right when we left off then.
Yes.
Um, so, which is laundry, we're on, along, uh, yeah, yeah, laundry. So laundry is on track, uh, thirty percent. And again, I guess, you know, we're at the end of this here, but, um, we, we do look at the wages, um, obviously, and you can see twenty-six percent there. Um, that is one area that is, is very stable, I think, as far as their staffing. So, uh, we do take those things into consideration, but I do think that, like Deb already said, we will walk and and see if there's some wiggle in some places for sure. Um, housekeeping is, uh, projecting in projecting a deficit of six thousand eight sixty-three, um, and that's due to the need, um, of using more part-time wages. Uh, and so that line is projected to go over based on its current spend of fifty-four percent uh, for the year. Um, that said, there is an open position in there, um, but again, they're looking to hire for that position and then we have to update the insurances. And so, uh, being early is waiting to get a little bit of information. So that sixty-eight fifty-three could actually turn around when we get somebody in that position. Um, maybe they're paid more, maybe they're paid less, maybe they take a family plan, a single, it's all things that will adjust. Um, positions pharmacy. Um, that is on track at twenty-six percent. I don't believe you have that in there. You have a zero. It's, is what I think. Um, so I apologize for that. That didn't transfer in, but it is twenty-six percent. Um, and so they're on track with that. Activities is twenty-nine percent. So they're looking good in there. Here, God thing is projecting a deficit, um, at three hundred and twelve dollars. And the reason for that is the employee got, uh, qualified for the second set. If it hasn't happened often, it happened this year. Um, but that is something that should be able to be made up within supplies. Uh, they don't often spend what is budgeted for on that line. So that should be okay in there. So the nursing home overall projects a thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollar surplus. Um, the total log in line is projecting a deficit of ten thousand to twenty-eight. Um, obviously, we, we've had some discussions here and so we can make some changes a little bit in places and, and that's gonna change some. Um, and we'll also have to update for uh, the twenty-five thousand dollar transfer versus the fifty, which is built into here. So that's gonna make some changes as well.
That'll definitely swing into a surplus and not a deficit.
It will, um, and I, I initially have said that, um, with all the transfers, and again, we haven't gotten to talk about, but um, that it would end up with a surplus of fifty-eight thousand, seven seventy-two. That isn't the case right now because the transfer is twenty-five over here. Um, but at any rate, it is going to swing into a surplus instead of a deficit. Um, that said, I talked about this a couple of times in the expense. I do have a budget transfer with me. Um, and it is specifically to transfer five thousand dollars into the admin legal line and fourteen thousand dollars into the finance health insurance line. Um, at least for the finance health insurance lines, we know that number, we know that that is, um, going to go over. Um, and that entire area has been adjusted based on, um, the wages being paid.
Laurie.
Yeah.
What's that overage expected to be?
Uh, the total overage is expected to be thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty. That takes into consideration uh, savings in the wage line as well as, um, overage in the health insurance line and retirement as well as the health opt-off and down based on the insurance plan that's being taken, then bill qualified for the health opt, uh, down. And so the total deficit is thirteen thousand, eight forty, based on all of those things in that line. Um, uh, office supplies sometimes gets kind of close and sometimes goes over. Um, travel and, uh, professional development, I could say that there could potentially be some savings there. So there's a bit of an offset, but it's probably about a three thousand dollar offset, maybe four. So you're talking about, if that's the case, then we could end up with a ten thousand dollar deficit in that line, in that budget. Um, and the request was to transfer that from the unanticipated expenditures. And it's a total of nineteen thousand dollars. We're gonna hold off on the budget transfer and put that aside for now.
Thoughts on the transfer?
Same as they were. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of making a transfer at this stage of the year.
Okay. There's your hunches.
Uh, I would, yeah.
Me too, okay.
Okay. All right, um, the next thing you have is the cash flow. Um, the cash flows.
I just can't, I just can't. I think that's when he just got this. I can, oh, I can speak to the legal expenses. There's another invoice for fourteen hundred dollars that, um, that has not been entered into here for the solar lease. Essentially, that five thousand is gone. We have a case, this sheepdog issue. I asked if we do try to pursue collecting that money, uh, what a lawsuit might cost. He told me five to ten thousand. And that decision's not been made. But there's not going to be money to do that. So and, and that, I don't, I mean, that's in your hands. If you don't wanna do it, that's fine.
Well, let's.
There won't be money. I don't have anywhere that can make up five to ten thousand dollars in this budget.
Maybe we should put the sheepdog situation onto the next agenda. We're meeting Monday, next Monday? No, two, we've.
Uh, the first, I don't.
Yes, it is.
When is that then? Yes.
It is next Monday. Maybe we should put on the agenda, commissioners can decide if we wanna pursue this and.
I'd feel more comfortable to, you know, having a conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll forego the, the transfers for now.
Okay.
All right.
But we're still gonna pay our legal bills.
Well, I can enter that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna enter them all.
We're still going to continue to, to pay our bills because at the bottom line of the budget, there's still plenty of money. And I get that in that line there isn't, but at this moment, there is, there is still.
In the bottom line of the budget, the whole budget, yeah, then.
The bottom line of the administration budget, as we said today, there is plenty of money.
As long as the funds are available. We're okay.
Okay. Cash flow is updated through April twenty-second. The total cash position at the time is, um, ninety point four million dollars. Um, in November, the cash position is expected or projected to be one point one million, one million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. Um, but we are on track to, at this point, not require a second borrowing. Um, so, I mean, we, we would have some savings, uh, in some of the debt service lines if we don't have a second borrowing, uh, which haven't been put on the budget actual, uh, because we don't yet. So, you know, that's that's a possibility. Um, and then the last thing you have for this is the receivable balance history. Um, I did a, a bit of color coding because sometimes I think that, I look at it every day and we all miss that, but it just, it's the other people, they may not know what I'm doing. So I did some color coding. Um, the blue is highlighting the difference between the starts of two thousand and twenty-four and the start of two thousand and twenty-three, which kind of gives you the comparison, um, as far as when we were then and now. Um, we're starting two thousand and twenty-four with a higher receivable in part due to being owed funds from the state.
That chart, do you have an extra? I didn't have it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, bye.
That's okay.
All right.
Please continue.
All right, so, uh, the reason why we're starting two thousand and twenty-four part of, I should say, the reason why we're starting two thousand and twenty-four with a higher receivable, um, is because of some of the issue we've seen with the state. Um, so we are owed money from them, um, which has started to, uh, come in. Um, so that is good. Um, I talked with them today and we are starting to see receipts on some of these claims that were owed coming in. The peach color or orange, um, I guess, uh, shows that we collected a hundred and three percent in February and a hundred and eight percent in February and March, uh, I'm sorry, in March. So the reason for the higher percent is that some of the receipts in February and March of two thousand and twenty-four were actually for two thousand and twenty-three claims. And you can see that by looking at the top in the same colored area where that, um, amount is reduced each month of two thousand and twenty-three. So that's, uh, good news in, in essence. In two thousand and twenty-four, we're still collecting for receivables in two thousand and twenty-three. That is the last of that I have.
Back to the cash flow statistics for a second.
Yeah.
Uh, the excess cash, where, where is that our debt and earning and what is it earning?
Yep, so that is, um, at Bank of New Hampshire. And they are, uh, it's actually in a sweep account, um, and it earns, I'm gonna have to go, they're matching, uh, what the P-DIP.
Okay.
Is. And if you look at it, it is, if you look at Bank of New Hampshire and you look at P-DIP, you will see two different amounts. And the reason for that is because uh, one of them is advertising the seven-day yield and the other one is advertising the actual rate that you're getting that day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that is Bank of New Hampshire, uh, advertising the actual rate you're getting that day. Yes.
And that's roughly five and a half percent.
Yes.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. That was the last of that report. I do have one other thing here on the agenda. Certificate of Authority, the County Attorney's Branch. Um, so on February thirteenth, um, the commissioners voted in agreement to allow acceptance of the victim witness grant, the VOKA, that the County Attorney's Office has had. We've had this grant for a number of years. Um, the certificate of authority that you should have before you.
I know, we don't.
I don't have it, no.
Do you have it? No one has it. Do you have it?
I have it.
All right.
You want to pass it? Want me to make the coffee and bring it back? I'm sorry?
The pills, yes.
Okay, you want me to make the coffee?
I'll go make the coffees.
So the certificate of authority that you don't have in front of you, I'll just tell you what it is. And then, um, it authorizes the county attorney to sign the grant contract and its necessary documents that go with it. Um, it's a document that has been signed in years past or approved by you in years past, and I'm presenting it to you on behalf of the County Attorney's Office um, and asking for your signature granting that authority to the county attorney, the new county attorney. And we'll wait for that to come.
Okay.
Is he, is, was he appointed as an interim?
Uh, no, not as an interim.
Well.
Were you?
Yeah, until the election. He's, he's running.
Was he appointed as the, as the county attorney or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Interim.
As the county attorney.
Oh, yes, or not, okay. Two different things.
But the term expires November.
Right, but.
Technically, he's appointed the county commissioner to, to fulfill the duties of the county attorney.
Okay.
And there were no other candidates?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can't walk quiet, I should.
I can't.
No chance.
So this document is required, um, as part of the grant documents by the state. Um, it's identical, uh, to the documents in years past, other than it's naming a different county attorney. And it gives Keith G. Cormier the authorization to sign the grant contract as described on here, which is the VOKA, um, Victim of Crime Act Grant that pays eighty percent of the two victim witness, um, coordinators and, um, allows him to actually sign the contract and the, um, exhibit that go with it. And so I'm presenting it to you.
Okay, yeah, this is something we agreed on earlier in the year.
It was a grant that was agreed on, yes, on February third.
Their motion to grant, to allow?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rachel, if you're second to.
Motion carries. Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you. This is one we need you to sign.
There's a blank here.
Okay.
This one. Which one?
Any old one.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
You have a meeting next Monday?
Yes, apparently we do. Yes, yes.
First Monday of the month.
Yeah, oh, that's right. That's right, we did your off schedule.
All right, uh, Commissioners, on to other business. Is there any other business there, look?
No.
Okay. No, see, no comment from the public? We can adjourn this meeting.
What did, before we adjourn, what was the uh? Delegations. Vote and elected. Wages?
That's a good question. I was not here, um, I was away. Deborah, you were here for that meeting?
I was here, I don't have the numbers with me. They did uh.
They voted some races.
Agreed to give some small increases to. Commissioners, the treasurer. The county attorney, all of the chefs.
So, you know, their elected official is registered.
Needs to not get any.
So they. All elected officials except what?
That's right.
Did they give any explanation as to why?
Well, they were going to, they were setting their um, wage amounts based on, looking at an average of other counties. And they wanted to bring our elected officials up to at least. The average of what the other counties are paying now.
Yeah.
And so the register deeds is over that average, so they did not think that they needed to increase that rate.
Were there any other elected positions that were not at the average that they did increase?
Uh, the chair was a little over the average, but they increased it a little, anyway.
I didn't give any explanation as to why they did one but not the other. Well, that seems suspect.
Yeah, I.
It was a difficult meeting to, to, to watch.
Yes, it was. I wasn't there, but I learned.
There were a lot of things that didn't make sense, and they, there were no reasons given.
Interesting.
Uh, the county attorney did get a bump, correct?
Yes, um, from the ninety-eight thousand. To one oh two for the next two years.
And Bill, where's your jump, do you recall?
Uh, well, if I win the election, I'll get a thirteen and all pay raise.
Okay. Thought I'd pay for a couple of signs this summer.
Big, big cut.
Okay, any other business discussion?
I don't have any.
And I move adjournments.